Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the July, January twenty seventh rescheduled regular council work session and regular council meeting. Obviously, last Tuesday, we weren't able to get together, so we scheduled all of that for today. I'll call the meeting to order and ask Councilman Jones to leave us with the implication.
Thank you, Mayor. Would you all join me in thanks, please? Father God, we come to you this hour asking for your blessing and help as we are gathered together. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand and ask that you would clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. Have us be good students of facts that we must weigh that affect each and every decision. Have us hear every issue with fairness and discernment. We ask for your protection around those that work to protect us from harm and serve us in times of emergency, both here and away. Other cities and other states face tremendous challenges from disaster and weather, so we pray for calmness, action, and swift delivery of aid to those in need. We pray for peace. We pray for healing. We pray for honesty and fair dealing at every level of government. This we pray in the name of all we hold sacred and holy, all that we hold good and right and true. It is in your son's name that we ask these and all things. Thank you.
Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, and indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Steve. Tell me if you call rules, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Garrus?
Here.
Mr. Sinak?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Dr. Dyken?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mayor Craft?
Here.
First item on the agenda tonight is approval of minutes. We got two sessions to consider tonight, the first of which was the special meeting of January the thirteenth, twenty twenty five.
Motion to approve January thirteenth, twenty twenty five, special meeting.
Second?
I have a motion, a second to approve these minutes. Has presented any discussion or comment? Only favor say aye. No aye. Any opposed? The next set is also on the January the thirteenth. It was a regular council meeting minutes from that night.
Move for approval of the meeting minutes of January thirteenth, twenty twenty five.
Second?
I have a motion, a second to approve these minutes. Any discussion? Only favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those minutes are also approved. Next item is the approval of expense vouchers in the middle in the number of eight million, seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand, four hundred and ninety-four dollars and twenty cents.
Yes, sir. Five point five million of that was for an advanced principal pay down on a line of credit that the city's been utilizing. One point two million was for our citywide capital projects, most of which was for the Eco Tourism Center. Just over a million dollars was to renew our, these are partial payments, but to renew our workman's comp and property and general liability insurance policies. We had just over two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars for capital purchases, which went toward five police interceptors and one Ford F-150. The remaining operational expenses for the two-week period was just over seven hundred and thirty thousand. And to give you some reference, on average, they run about six hundred and thirty-seven thousand for last year, so it was just a little bit higher than usual.
Thank you very much. Counsel, those who present for approval.
Move for the approval of expense vouchers as stated.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to approve these expense vouchers as presented. Any discussion? Only favor say aye. No aye. Any opposed? Those expense vouchers are approved. Before we get into the regular agenda, I want to speak briefly about an event that happened at our school construction site early, early this morning, well before anyone, fortunately, before anyone was on the site. A portion of the framing collapsed, and when it did, it was quite a dangerous situation that fortunately, no one was on the site. It was closed, and no one was injured. That's the good news. And this is still the property owned by the contracting company, who is in the process of figuring out what happened, and they've got builder's risk insurance to cover any of the issues that occur from that. So it's all in their hands. We don't know much more than that. We will find out when they find out, and when we do, we'll let you know. But it doesn't appear to be interfering with our construction schedule for our school. Obviously, it will affect the construction of the covered practice facility, but not before, it'll be done and completed before we open our school. So just don't have any more answers, no questions, because I have no answers other than what I've just said. So we don't know yet. When we know, we'll let you, when we know more, we'll let you know more. So I just want to get that out of the way, because I know that it's been a source of interest and concern and a lot of discussion about that, and fortunately, again, no one was hurt. So moving on, the first item on the real agenda is a proclamation of Arbor Day. Jenny?
So I wanted to let everyone know that Arbor Day is coming up on February fifteenth. We will be hosting a tree giveaway at the Civic Center from eight-thirty to ten-thirty in the morning. This is sponsored by the Gulf Shores Beautification Board, and will be, as I mentioned, held at the Civic Center. The Beautification Board members, I'd like to recognize David Mayfield, Karen Still, Cindy Key, Zeddy Bauer, Linda Bender, Mary Wayne Gilmore, and Lisa Osborne, as well as Gary Sinak, who is our council liaison. We will be giving away four trees this year per household. We have a total of eight hundred trees available, so we're looking forward to everyone joining us for that. Each tree is going to include information on how to plant it, how to care for it, and those type of things. We have a great variety of trees available. First up is our red maple tree with a couple examples there. The pawpaw, as well as the sweet shrub. The green ash, and the Chinese pistache. The wild black cherry, and the overcup oak. There's some photos from our previous year's event. It's been a successful event for the Beautification Board, and we're looking forward to another great year this year. So with that, I would also like, we have a proclamation from the mayor for Arbor Day of twenty twenty-five. I'll read that really quick. Whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska, Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas the city of Gulf Shores has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation, and desires to continue its tree planting ways, and now therefore, on behalf of Robert Kraft, Mayor of Gulf Shores, Alabama, along with the City Council of Gulf Shores, Alabama, do hereby proclaim Saturday, February fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, as Arbor Day in the city of Gulf Shores, and urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote well-being of present and future generations. So we have several members of the Beautification Board we'd like to have come up and accept this proclamation.
With your permission, I'm gonna come down and stand with you, Arbor Day crew. They do a great job, didn't they?
Yes, they do.
Grant, you got a couple things for us?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon. So we have two public assembly permit applications I'd like to present. The first is Women's Care Medical Center. Sue Levens, and I'm not sure if Sue made it to the council meeting today. Sue Levens with the Women's Care Medical Center is requesting an event on March fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, from eight AM until ten AM at Johnny Sims Park. This is a walk for life, and they have held this event for a number of years around the park. They set up at the Kids Park Pavilion, and then they walk around the Bowdenham Recreation Center block on the sidewalk. This event has been reviewed by all of our city services, and it's ready for your consideration with a recommendation to approve. Again, this is for eight to ten in the morning on March the fifteenth, Saturday. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Grant on this public assembly permit?
Motion to approve the public assembly permit for Women Care Walk.
Second?
I have a motion, a second to approve this permit. As submitted, any discussion? Only favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That permit is approved.
Thank you.
Okay.
And then the second for this evening is the Shaka Beach Bash Volleyball Tournament, and Leah Cooper is here today. Thank you for being here, Leah. This is a request to have a volleyball tournament on the beaches at Gulf Shores at West Gulf Place, March twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, and thirtieth, from eleven AM till five-thirty, and then they go all day on Saturday, and then from eleven to five-thirty again on Sunday. On the screen ahead of you is the setup location for the Shaka Beach Bash Tournament Event. About twenty nets are being set up just south of the West Gulf Place parking area. You'll see the administrative tent, medical. They do intend on having food vendors and merchandise vendors on site, and they'll be set up there around the town green. This event will bring roughly fifty participants on Friday, about two hundred on Saturday, and seventy-five on Sunday. And I'd like to invite Leah to step up and say a few words, if you'd like to, about your Shaka Beach Bash Tournament?
Thank you all for the consideration. This will be our sixth tournament at the beach. I know y'all are probably sick of me coming up here every six months to say that. But in the past, we've had, with all of the players that have signed up for this event, we have had four different countries represented and sixteen states represented. This is a really big tournament for players that want to go pro and get their points, and just as you cannot just run and sign up for the Boston Marathon, you cannot just go sign up for certain tournaments. You have to qualify. So we're considered a qualifier. So we are on the official AVP website as Gulf Shores, Alabama is a destination, and everybody loves our beach. They love our sand. It's better than Huntington Beach and Hermosa Beach, and it's just been a really cool experience. So thanks for your support.
Thank you, Leah. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions. All the insurance materials have been submitted and have been approved, and the application is recommended for approval by all of our staff.
Thank you, Grant. Any questions for Grant on this assembly permit?
Now move for the approval of public assembly permit for the Shaka Beach Bash.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to approve this permit. As submitted, any discussion? Only favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? That permit is approved. Thank you, Grant. Now to new business, and this is a Cal Council meeting, or I haven't done that yet, but I intend to. We're gonna talk about the resolution, and before we vote on it, this is your opportunity to give us input. We weren't able to meet last Monday in our typical Cal meeting. It was actually Tuesday because of the holiday, but it's snow issues, so we'll do that tonight. So Shelby, will you introduce Resolution sixty-nine, twenty-one?
Yes, sir. This is our first surplus auction of the year. These items have been approved by all of the department heads, and if approved this evening, they will be available on the GovDeals website, starting tomorrow, January twenty-eighth, and they'll be available through Tuesday, February eleventh.
Thank you, Shelby. Any questions from the audience on Resolution sixty-nine, twenty-one? Counsel, questions, comments?
Move for the adoption of Resolution sixty-nine, two-one as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution sixty-nine, twenty-one as submitted. Any discussion? Only favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sixty-nine, twenty-one is approved and adopted. Next, we have Clint. You've got several for us, and Resolution sixty-nine, twenty-two.
Yes, sir. The first one I've got here tonight is a professional services contract for the construction, engineering, and inspection of the Waterway Village Pedestrian Bridge Project to Neil Schaefer Incorporated. And so that is in an amount not to exceed two million, two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. And just a little background, the city awarded the construction contract on January sixth, and per the state and federal requirements and the requirements of the build grant, CE and I services must be provided for any bridge structure. And so the city requested qualifications for CE and I from four engineering firms that are pre-qualified with ALDOT to provide CE and I services in Alabama. And we received qualifications from three firms, and Neil Schaefer was selected due to their qualifications and relevant bridge experience, and a proposal was provided from Neil Schaefer in an amount not to exceed two million, two sixty-four, one sixty-one, twenty-one. And we'll note that this is a cost-plus contract, not a lump-sum contract. Therefore, we'll only pay for what we get out of this, and so that not-to-exceed amount should be worst-case scenario. And the capital projects will work with Neil Schaefer to minimize those costs as much as possible. And again, just for reference, here's the vicinity map showing where the bridge is crossing the intercoastal there. And the rendering of the bridge. And funding for this project is budgeted in this year and next year, and the bill grant is providing just under eight million in funding towards the construction of the project. And staff recommends authorizing this contract to Neil Schaefer in an amount not to exceed two million, two hundred and sixty-five thousand. And we anticipate having the notice proceed issued to the contractor here in the next few weeks, and so that will put a finish date on the project in December of twenty-six. And so with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions you guys have.
Thank you, Clint. Counsel, any questions on, with Clint, on Resolution sixty-nine, twenty-two?
Oh, Clint, will you go back to where you had the parking lots and stuff?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to look.
Yeah, one block on the north side and one block on the south side.
Yeah, I was just making sure that they had a turn-in on the old Cameron site. There were the repair motors and stuff. I didn't see it at first. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, counsel? Anybody in the audience, any questions on this resolution? Counsel, action?
Move for the adoption of Resolution sixty-nine, twenty-two and waive its reading.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to adopt Resolution sixty-nine, twenty-two as presented. Any discussion or comment? Only favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sixty-nine, twenty-two is approved and adopted. Clint, thank you. Next?
All right. The next one I've got is to authorize a professional services contract for the design of the Auburn driveway relocation to Sawgrass Consulting. And so that will be in an amount not to exceed thirty-three thousand dollars, and this is to perform design services related to the relocation of the Auburn driveway off of Coastal Gateway Boulevard. And so with the construction of the new high school and the associated entrance road, a new signalized intersection is gonna be installed on Coastal Gateway Boulevard. And that new intersection is about a hundred feet west of the current entrance to the Auburn veterinary facility. And so with that, the current median cut in front of Auburn will be removed, and the Auburn driveway needs to be aligned with that new intersection within the city right away there. And so Sawgrass will provide the surveying, the geotechnical soils report, civil design, bidding assistance if needed, and CE and I if needed, and the geotechnical construction testing. And so this design is intended to set up that road for a future connection north. And so just for reference, here's the location of the Auburn facility there off the Beach Express on Coastal Gateway. And so this is kind of blow up, showing the new road to the south there going into the high school. You can see it overlaid there, and so this would realign that driveway. We'd take out the existing driveway there and put a new driveway that will connect to the Auburn facility and set us up for that future connection north. And so cost for this project is budgeted in twenty twenty-five, an account number forty-eight seven nine eight oh nine eleven, and staff recommends authorizing the contract to Sawgrass in an amount not to exceed thirty-three thousand. And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Clint. Will Sawgrass be also designing the traffic signal that goes there? Part of his contract?
No. So they're just coordinating with that signal design. So Skipper did that design, and that's being installed with the high school project, and so Sawgrass is gonna work with Skipper and make sure that this aligns with that new road to the south and the new signals.
Very important that we have signalized intersection in and out of our school, plus in and out of Auburn, so we had to move the entry to Auburn a little bit further to the west to line up with this new school site. So that's kind of reasons for this design change. That's Resolution sixty-nine. Counsel, any questions for Clint on this resolution? Anybody in the audience, any questions or comments? Resolution sixty-nine, twenty-three.
Motion to adopt Resolution sixty-nine, twenty-three.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to adopt this resolution as presented. Any discussion? Only favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sixty-nine, twenty-three is approved and adopted. Clint, sixty-nine, twenty-four?
All right. So this one is to award the bid for the construction of the Justice Center to Person Services Corporation. And that would be based off of their sealed bid in an amount not to exceed twenty million, nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars. So the city opened bids on January fourteenth, and Person's was the lowest conforming bidder with a total bid amount of twenty-nine, eighty-seven, two twenty-three. And this project will completely renovate the former Sacred Heart Building to house the courts and police department, as well as a new jail and Sallyport being added to the rear of the building. And this facility will combine the PD, the jail, and the courts all under one roof, and this will provide significant enhancements for the police department, providing a modern, up-to-date facility that can hopefully fulfill their needs for the foreseeable future. And so just for reference, this shows the general location there, and highlighted in yellow is the old Sacred Heart Building. And if you can see here, this is the site plan for the new building, so, or for the, you can see the existing building there in the center, and the new jail being added off the rear, and this Sallyport, and then a storage building to the very rear. And this is just the architectural rendering of what the new front's gonna look like. And so we have just under ten million budgeted in this year's, for this project, and the remainder will be budgeted in twenty twenty-six. And we anticipate starting this around the first of March, which would put us finishing around June of next year. And so staff recommends awarding this contract to Person's in an amount not to exceed, oh, a typo there. Got an extra zero.
I kinda wondered about that.
The chief was back there licking his lips. Get a big thumbs up.
But it's twenty million, nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-three.
Thank you, Clint. Great correction there. Counsel, any questions on sixty-nine, twenty-four? Two for Clint. By the audience, any questions or comments?
Yes, sir.
Some time ago, there was discussion about a light going up at that intersection of County Road Four in the medical drive where it comes out. That never showed up, and I just, with the increase in traffic, that's gonna be.
Yes, sir. We have that intersection designed, and we're just waiting, because really, until we get this Justice Center opened up, we don't have the traffic going in and out of there yet to need that. But so our plan is to do that in twenty-six and have that open at the same time that the building is.
That was also supposed to be coordinated with the light at fifty-nine?
Yes. Yes, that'll be synchronized together.
And some lane improvements in there that is part of the improvement of Highway fifty-nine North. We'll be putting a center median there to not allow the initial left turn-in that backs up traffic so bad on both sides going out towards fifty-nine. So all of that will happen. That streetlight will go up in conjunction with all this other construction that's going. So yes, it is happening.
All right, thank you.
And it'll be up before we get this thing open.
And so to make that happen, we'll probably bid that out this year, even though we've got the money for that light budgeted next year, but just so we can get it in in time.
It's worthy to note that we all know in the past, we've had open bids, sometimes where we've only had one bidder, which is not fun, sitting up here having to ward those. But we had five bidders, and three of them were within three percent of each other, which tells me we had really good bid documents, and we've got a competitive market for these kind of projects. So it's nice to see that kind of turnout for a project like this. So good work to everybody that worked on that plan for so long to get it where it is.
And this goes in line with the Pet Bridge that we bid. We bid this out previously, came out way over budget, and same thing with the Pet Bridge, way over budget. So we rebid both of those, and as Phillip pointed out, we've had other bidders in much better cost and pricing to be able to do this and get this much-needed Justice Center back on track. So that's Resolution sixty-nine, twenty-four. Counsel, any questions or comments?
Move for adoption of Resolution sixty-nine, twenty-four.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution sixty-nine, twenty-four as presented. Any discussion? Only favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Sixty-nine, twenty-four is approved. Clint, thank you. You've got another one.
One more. So this is authorizing the Capital Projects Department to apply for an RAA grant for streets resurfacing. And the RAA grant program, that's the Rebuild Alabama Act, and we actually applied for this last year and didn't get it. They pretty much only did one or two per county, and somebody else in the county got the one last year. But so it's, the max is two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so we would like to. And so we would like to to pursue a grant for two hundred and forty-nine, four hundred and twenty-five dollars to fund street resurfacing within the city. And this is a grant program to provide funding to local municipalities to improve roadways. And if awarded, the city would utilize this grant program to resurface approximately one mile of streets in twenty-twenty-five. And there is a forty-four thousand, eight hundred dollar required grant match to cover design, CE and I, and testing for the project that if awarded will, depending on when they award things, it could be later this year or could be the first part of next year. So we'll deal with that if we get it.
This would be to add to the budget they already have for resurfacing.
Yes, sir.
This would have it to so we could expand that.
Yes. And so I've got a so these were the streets that we submitted on. They're mostly kind of down West Beach. We tried to keep them in a relatively close proximity so that a contractor could have moped in one time and hit them all. And this, there are a lot of smaller streets that that could use some attention. And so with that, staff recommends authorizing Capital Projects to pursue this grant to be applied to resurfacing throughout the city. And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Counsel. Any questions, comments? By the audience, anything?
Move for the adoption of Resolution sixty-nine twenty-five and waive its reading.
Second. Have a motion in a second to adopt this resolution as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sixty-nine twenty-five is approved. Sixty-nine twenty-six, Lee.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of resolutions this afternoon for you all to consider. The first is a request to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Baldwin Baldwin County Emergency Communication District, BC nine-one-one. I won't say all that again, I'll just say BC nine-one-one from now on. And the City of Gulf Shores, this is a request from BC nine-one-one to approve an agreement with the city in order to maintain the accuracy and consistency of the countywide automatic location identification database. It's really a request for the county E nine-one-one to provide addressing services just to keep things consistent across the county. The city responsibilities in this agreement are to adopt the BC nine-one-one addressing street name standards. The city currently in our code of ordinances has some street name standards that are very minimal. We have reviewed their standards and we will be following this up with an ordinance to update the city's street name standards to reflect what Baldwin County nine-one-one requires. I just want to say before I go any further that Chief Sealy and Fire Marshal Suri both did the heavy lifting on this. They've reviewed this agreement, they've reviewed the street naming standards. I'm really just presenting it because the funding for the addressing is coming out of a community development budget because we do, Planning and Zoning currently does the addressing. We do it all by hand, so this will really be bringing us into the twenty-first century. So we're all in favor of it as well. We've reviewed it. But this has been a real heavy lift by the fire department in particular because this is just public safety, pure and simple. So the second item that we'll be responsible for is just conducting field inspections for street signs and addresses when they find a discrepancy. We're kind of their eyes and ears down here in the City of Gulf Shores. We also will be providing pertinent information for the develop through the development review process. We're already doing that. Last year, the Planning Commission added E nine-one-one on as a signatory on subdivision plats. We've also added them on the route for all site plan and subdivisions. So they're currently reviewing projects and helping us with the addressing. We'll also be required to verify the names on signage for new developments and new subdivisions. So if an Aventura comes in and the subdivision plat is called Aventura, but they put up a sign that says Whispering Oaks or something else, we need to notify them that the actual signage doesn't reflect what the subdivision was named. Also coordination on commercial business name changes, coordination on new street signs as well as missing street signs. And finally, this is our role here as far as community development is concerned, and that's compensating E nine-one-one for the addressing professional services. So they're actually going to have staff members that take over what we've been doing for years, which is addressing by hand on new subdivision plats and new site plans, and they'll take over that responsibility from the city. The benefits for this agreement, they use the latest and greatest addressing technology. It's fast, it's precise, it's consistent and accurate addressing, and it's proven to provide increased level of emergency for first responder arrival times versus other forms of addressing. This will remove a responsibility from our city staff and place that on Baldwin County. And all the data is entered into one GIS mapping database and it's the same database that they use at their communications call center. A uniform addressing system, the bottom line is this will promote, protect, and improve the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens and visitors of the City of Gulf Shores. So we are recommending approval. The budget implications are ten thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars annually, and that will come out of the Planning and Zoning Department's consulting services account. And that's the account number there. So this is something we'll just budget for annually, and staff is in favor of this agreement. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Lee. Counsel, any questions? By the audience, any questions about this E nine-one-one and the efficiency upgrade?
Move for the approval of Resolution sixty-nine twenty-six as presented.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve and adopt Resolution sixty-nine twenty-six. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sixty-nine twenty-six is approved. Thank you, Lee. One more.
Yes, sir. And this next one is a a request to authorize a selection of WAS design and accept a proposal in the amount not to exceed twenty-two thousand, three hundred dollars for professional services related to the landscape and irrigation design for the new airport terminal. Just a little bit of background, back in February of last year, as you all know, through the bipartisan infrastructure bill, the U.S. Department of Transportation awarded the Airport Authority a five million dollar grant that would be used towards the construction of a new commercial terminal. In June of last year, the City Council did approve the contract between the Authority and Person Services Corporation for the construction of the new terminal. And understanding that there was a gap between that five million dollar grant and the actual cost to construct the terminal, the City Council approved a loan to the Airport Authority of three million dollars in order to make up that gap. That three million dollars was intended to be used for site improvements as well as improvements for the terminal facility itself. And that's why we have this proposal from WAS. This proposal does include preliminary design and designs and meetings associated with both preliminary design and construction documents. So we have two meetings that they'll schedule to go over the preliminary design with city leadership as well as the Airport Authority and Airport Director, and then two meetings at construction document phase so that we're all on the same page as to what the landscape is going to look like. And we'll all have opportunities to provide feedback on the design. The CDs will include planning plans and irrigation plans as well as a a budget for the project that will includes include an itemized materials list, the costs and the vendors or suppliers that have been identified to provide those materials for the project. Some background on the budget implications. We have given WAS a budget of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for materials only, and that's thanks to Noel Hand and the Public Works Department. They do all the maintenance out in the airport area right now. So having them onboard to oversee the installation, they're actually going to do the installation, make sure that these are plants that they're easy to to maintain over a long period of time, and and they work within our environment. But that's a huge cost savings for the city, which means we're going to be able to put more into the plant materials. This is a three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar project, which the price of materials is one hundred and fifty thousand, thanks to Noel and his crews doing the installation. So appreciate that. We would have a much lesser landscape package if it weren't for the Public Works Department doing that install. So for this resolution itself, is is a professional services contract not to exceed twenty-two thousand, three hundred dollars. And that will come out of the three million dollar loan. It was projected to come out of that loan that the City Council has granted to the airport. And staff is recommending approval of this professional services contract. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Lee. Counsel, any questions on sixty-nine twenty-seven? By the audience, any questions or comments?
Motion to approve Resolution sixty-nine twenty-seven.
Second. A motion in a second to approve this resolution. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Sixty-nine twenty-seven is approved and adopted. Thank you, Lee. Brandon, you got Ordinance twenty-one forty-nine. Did you bring backup today?
I did, Mayor, I did. Now, I still want to give credit where credit is due. So every three years, International Code Council comes out with new building codes. It's not just building codes, it's mechanical plumbing. There's nine total codes that they publish every three years. And you guys have been very receptive to adopting these codes every three years to keep us up to date and keep our community safe and being resilient. And I think it really showed after Hurricane Sally in twenty-twenty with the new codes that we're enforcing that being able to get back into these houses and the less damage that was done after the codes that we're enforcing now, it really shows and it proves that we're doing a really fine job out there. But in saying that, there's nine different codes that we enforce. And if you laid them all together, they'd be this thick. I thought about bringing them in, just give you an illustration of what we're doing. And by doing that, these codes are designed for the East Coast, the West Coast, Midwest, the South, it's all one book. So we have to go through it and we make amendments. We massage this code to fit our area, things that may apply in California that do not apply here and vice versa. So in doing that, I'd like to recognize my guys because I tasked them with this, with going through these codes and really making sure that we put a common sense approach to it and that we maintain the safety, life safety and the standards, keep them high here in Gulf Shore. So Lance, Jonathan, Jeff, and Brandon, thank you all so much for everything you've done because they've gone through these codes and actually put together a list of twenty-three different amendments that really fit our area. And like I said, it's no simple task and but they've done a great job and they do, not only are they reviewing and making these recommendations, they're the ones that are out there enforcing it. They're the ones having to deal with the contractors and the homeowners and they've done a fine job. So thank you guys for what you've done. So in a little background, also, I drew the short straw a couple of years ago to be president of our local code officials chapter. And it's basically all the code officials and jurisdictions in Baldwin County. And I set out with a goal to adopt the twenty-twenty-four international codes throughout the entire, have every jurisdiction do that. I know that doesn't really affect what we do here, but it does for all the contractors, design professionals, and having everyone on the same codes. And I really feel like we're going to get a hundred percent participation throughout all of Baldwin County. And I can tell you that that would be unprecedented. I've been doing this, March would be twenty-four years, and we've never had everybody together. And I really feel like we've all come together and we distributed the codes and the significant changes and even our amendments out throughout the county to get feedback, got feedback from our one of our members on the Building Board of Adjustments and a couple of our different contractors. And everyone seems to be on board and likes what we're doing. And to get everybody on the same page in Baldwin County, we've got to start somewhere. So start it here in Gulf Shore. So hopefully you guys will adopt the twenty-twenty-four codes for me.
Thank you, Brandon.
That's a huge deal. I mean, that is a that's a huge deal to get everybody on one page throughout the county and what that does to for all those involved in the process. So hats off to you. I'll say this, I know you go through this every year and your guys go through these and make these amendments, but you you do a really good job of of keeping what what needs to be in there for life safety and sustainability and buildings in our area. And then you really do a good job of cutting out waste and expenses where because if you adopted the whole thing, the cost of construction for the end user and the homeowner and the businesses would go up significantly every time these these are adopted and put out. So a lot of benefit to the community and the building world and design world, but mostly the end users who know that life safety is being taken care of and expense is being paid attention to. I just want to know if you left in the codes related to snow loads?
No, I did not. That was a one-time deal, I'm pretty sure.
I hope you're right.
Before we start the approval process, any questions or comments from the counsel on this ordinance? From the audience on this ordinance? Is there a motion we suspend the rules?
Whether we suspend rules, we proceed that we may consider this ordinance.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to suspend the rules. Toby?
Yes, sir. Mr. Garrus?
Aye.
Mr. Sinak?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Dr. Dyken?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mayor Craft?
Aye.
Rules are suspended, we're free to consider Ordinance twenty-one forty-nine.
Loathing to consider Ordinance twenty-one forty-nine.
Second. Have a motion in a second to adopt this ordinance as presented. Toby?
Mr. Garrus?
Aye.
Mr. Sinak?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Dr. Dyken?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
And Mayor Craft?
Aye.
Rules are. The ordinance is adopted. Thank you. Good job, Brandon, and good job, guys.
Yep.
He takes all the credit normally, so.
Brandon.
Who does to him to finally come in here and say who shows who really does the work? That concludes all the official business for this evening. Any committee reports? Hearing none. I know we've got a few staff reports, but I want to start first with John. He'll get us an update on on a few things.
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, we had an unprecedented event. Hard to believe if you look outside today, but we did have a all-day snow on Tuesday of last week. And I just wanted to give a recap of some of the work that our guys did. And I think our employees went above and beyond in this response. Our streets, sanitation, Public Works Department, they were constantly out there on Tuesday and Wednesday, conducting road assessments, taking care of the roads, salting and using snowmelt where possible. We made we made that last a long time, and I appreciate that because we did not start out with but two pallets of snowmelt. So that's great use of that. I also want to mention that they worked with the contractors that were working on fifty-nine and on the bridge. And actually, our guys stepped in and helped out when some of their equipment went down. And so without that, we really would have been in trouble. So again, thank you to our Public Works Department for that. Secondly, I wanted to thank the Police Department. They took an all-hands-on-deck approach to this. You know, not only did they deal with their regular calls, but they were out there at the intersections, staffing those bridges, informing drivers of safety conditions and continuing to patrol. You can see the conditions that they were working in were not ideal, and we appreciate the fact that they were out in those freezing temperatures and active snowfall all day. And then I wanted to also thank our fire rescue staff as well. They did bring in an additional crew for this event so that we can man an additional engine and and one additional ambulance during the event. They ran a total of fifty-four calls during those three days, four of which were medical transports. And so it was critical to have those extra resources and have that extra ambulance available to us. I wanted to kind of end this by pointing out a statistic that I'm still kind of not in belief of, but we had zero accidents during this event. Yes, we had some people run off into a few ditches, but we had zero accidents. And that is really a testament to all the hard work our staff did, as well as the great people of Gulf Shores using common sense during this event. I wanted to remind everyone to stay connected with the city. You know, if you aren't signed up for email and text notifications, last Tuesday was a great example of a reason to sign up. And so we have, you know, an opportunity for you to do that here and want to remind you to go to our website and sign up for that. were shared about our staff and kind of the love that our staff received while they were out there. We, we did hear you, and it was appreciated. So, from, from us to everyone in Gulf Shores, I wanted to say this is an update of what we did. And from me to the staff, and I think from everyone to the staff, thank you, because it was a great event. It was well done, and you kept us safe. Thank you.
Agreed. Dr. Aiken, Kevin, anything on the schools?
Just real quick, you've all received an invitation for Thursday morning at nine o'clock. We have a special event where the school system is being recognized by Apple Computer, which is always an honor. So, that will be at the Hangout Music Lab at the high school at nine o'clock Thursday. So, I hope you can attend.
Thank you. Jesse, our airport update? Got any news for us?
So, Mayor, Counsel, first, I wanna apologize for bringing the cold weather from Missouri. That was, I didn't see that happening. Again, I would like to echo the sentiments that everyone's already expressed about the working together as a community, and I can only imagine, I've come from places that have a lot of resources to handle this type of stuff, but what happened here was really awesome to see come together. I mean, from my colleagues up north, I can tell you, they were all, we were on national news in a lot of places, so that was really exciting to get to talk about that. As far as an airport update, the excitement is palpable for the launch of air service. We're one hundred and fourteen days away from commercial flights here in Gulf Shores. And so, with the bringing out of AC Airport Program Management, we're having weekly meetings with all the stakeholders. Everything's on track, and right now, kinda moving into a engagement phase with the transportation side of things and continuing to flesh that out as it comes to ground service agreements and operators. And so, those negotiations are just starting now, and I mean, a lot of excitement going on, and everything's on track. And working with the city on the architectural improvements for the exterior and interior is in progress, and so, a lot of good things happening. So, any questions on that?
Anybody got any questions or comments about the airport? It's the guy.
Thank you.
It's the point in the meeting where if you weren't able to get on the agenda and you have something you wanna approach the council about, we'd love to hear from you.
Mayor, Counsel, my name's Larry Davidson, and I'm a Vietnam veteran, and I wanted to share something just real quick, not complaining, not griping, because I love our city, I love the Bodenheimer Center, I've been going there six years, it's wonderful. But recently, during the snow thing, which is so rare, of course, they were closed all week, and they didn't put on their phone system about when they would be possibly open or anything, and people were going on Thursday and driving good ways and many miles, you know, to go exercise, and got there and it was closed, and the sign on the door said closed Tuesday and Wednesday. And so, hopefully, that won't ever happen again. I just wanted to bring that. And another thing that I wanted to say, that I believe with all my heart that the Bodenheimer Center should honor veterans and appreciate what they've done for our country, not just because I'm one, but for all the veterans. And they do not offer a discount there, they, they, they do not honor a, honor a free membership like Orange Beach. Orange Beach Recreation Center offers a free membership for all veterans for a lifetime. And so, I don't know if I'm approaching the same, the people, I don't know if y'all are in charge of that, but, but I just wanted to bring it to the Gulf Shore's attention, because we are a great city and, and we love our veterans. I know everybody in here does, and is thankful for what, you know, the veterans have done for our country. Thank you.
We agree with you, the veterans are really special folks, and that's something we can take a look at. No promises, but it's a reasonable request. Anybody else?
Move to adjourn.
Have a motion to adjourn, is there a second? But thank you, and thanks for your patience with the city through all of these issues, but we were grossly unprepared for snow.